This conference will now be recorded.
Hi Chris. Hello, everybody. Welcome to Wednesday, March 30th, meeting of the Monterey Select Board here at Town Hall in downtown Monterey. Got lots of things on the agenda. Let's try to keep it nice and friendly. No Will Smith move moments. Number one, town administrator items, update on human resource proposals for handbook update.
Yeah, Collins Center hasn't replied yet. She said she was gonna check with her partner to see if they could lower to the amount of money that we have.
Okay.
So hopefully by next week.
So I did just reach out. Who is it? Who is it? I got a lead on Michael Harrington, who is a lawyer in Hartford, Connecticut, but he has passed the bar in Massachusetts and Connecticut. And he wrote to me at least, I mean, it was two sentences. "I would be glad to help and can commit to meeting your needs within your budget." And...
This is for human, this is for human resource?
I, I asked him if he would be interested in updating the employee handbook for our town. I said ideally the final product would be legally updated, coherent, and consistent, and also reflect the particular needs of our town. Likely accomplish their meetings and consultations with the select board and town administrator. Is this something that you would be interested in doing? Our budget for this project is fairly rigid at 6,500 as we operate with town many government, and additional funds would take significant time to acquire. Please let me know if there's something you would be able to do. And he said, "I would be able, I would be glad to help and can commit to meeting your needs within your budget." Does the current handbook exist? So if the board is interested in attorney Harrington.
Okay, so I don't...
Employee handbook.
Am I missing, okay, so we'll, we'll, we'll look at it.
Yeah.
That one's actually number six. Right now, I'm sorry, not six.
This was, I actually, I just asked him about the employee handbook. I said, "We're looking for someone who would be willing to produce an updated employee handbook." Write the handbook update, 1A. Old business.
Yeah, I think the, the copy of their proposal is toward the end. It's right before the, should be your second to last document.
Why, oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, this email chain. I mean, the email, it was, it's just short. But my point being, if the board is interested in having this attorney, you know, draft the handbook and you can, I printed out just his webpage with his qualifications and history, then we could reach, if we want to interview him, you know, he didn't put together a proposal. I could ask if he'd like to put together a proposal, but, you know. I was, yeah. He has quite the...
I guess, so I, I do see lots and lots of experience. Things like OSHA and Connecticut Supreme Court. I don't, I don't see anything that says human resources.
Well, the, well, nationally, we're... You know, the first, his biography starts with, "My focus, this is practice on providing legal guidance to public and private sector employers and managing all aspects of the employment relationship." And he's worked, you know, he's, he's appeared before the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination, the State Labor Board, which is probably the Connecticut, because, you know, he's based out of Hartford, but he has passed the bar in Massachusetts. So if it's, you know, I know it's a very different direction than someone like the Collins Center, but if it's a direction we want to go, and he said he could do it within our budget, at least in that email, so.
Look, have him, have him put together a proposal.
Yep.
We can all, we can all look at it, we can have a discussion about it. Meanwhile, hopefully by that time, the Collins Center will come forward with their proposal, and then we'll have three proposals to look to, to, to... Sorry, I'll follow up with him here.
Just out of curiosity, why aren't we using the town attorney? Attorney Mazur specializes in HR. Why isn't he doing the handbook?
Well, I mean, that would certainly be beyond the retainer. So it would be an additional...
We got the money, the $6,500.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not opposed to considering it. I think there's something to be said for someone who has no relationship with the town, but there's also be said, something to be said for some, someone who already has a relationship with the town.
I think, I think if, if they're reaching out to him and asking if he, if he does something that he, that they feel comfortable doing, they may not, but, you know. Certainly worth exploring. I think that, I, I mean, I'd certainly rather have somebody who's got more, you know, who works within the state of Massachusetts most of the time. They can certainly, we can certainly, can certainly ask him if we'd like. I'll reach out to him.
You'll reach out to Brian, I'll reach out to Mayor Harrington.
Okay, hello, Mickey.
Hiya.
Review opinions from council on cellphone or personal email use policies provides everyone.
Yeah, I gave you those last week.
So my thinking was those would be best fit in an employee handbook. So when we redo the employee handbook, we should make sure, there was other policies, I think, about bullying and intimidation or similar, that we did the same thing. We were going to adopt as standalone policies. But I think it's just important to put all in one place to prevent a number of standalone policies.
I, I agree, I agree. Okay, new business, 1A. Sign public health collaborative intermunicipal agreement.
So the board of health has already signed this. This is the intermunicipal agreement for the public health nurses that fight on health received a grant for.
Can we, is this similar to what we saw previously?
We haven't signed one yet.
This is the first, this is the first one?
Yeah, you had a copy to look at before, but some changes were made. KP Law has reviewed it.
I read motion to accept or approve the intermunicipal agreement for public health shared services.
I second that. Any discussion? I vote yes.
Yes.
And yes.
Yes.
Are you gonna give me a copy?
Yeah, I'll give you a copy after this time.
Uh, okay, number two, open me, oh, sorry, sorry, transfer station operator appointment.
So we have had one applicant for the transfer station position, and Jim and I interviewed him earlier this week. We're recommending that you appoint Jim Work as a part-time transfer station attendant. He can start as soon as April 15th, so.
Okay.
So, oh. All I was gonna say is, sounds great. Given that we have the time to appoint him next week, should we appoint him next week? That way we can just put his name on the agenda and dot all of our eyes and cross.
So the only reason his name wasn't on there was because we were checking his references, and we didn't get the callbacks until today, so.
I, I could imagine, but since we, if, because Beth and Dave aren't, I mean, Beth, but since we don't need him until a couple weeks from now, could we do it next week? Or whatever.
I mean, since we're meeting weekly? So, well, so here's the, okay, so first of all, do we, do, do they get core checked?
They don't core check anybody except the place.
Oh, I just didn't know. So it's just generally, a general reference, reference check? Okay. Beth and Dave are lea, are, are physically leaving?
As of April 13th.
As of April 13th, so we want to get, so we want to get him in as, as quickly as possible to, so that he can be trained.
You appointed him today. I could ask him to start earlier so that he could work with them for a week.
I have no problem appointing him today, because I'm concerned that he needs as much on the job training as, as we can, as we can provide. Certainly, if, 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 if his name did not become apparent prior to this meeting, then it's, it's perfectly acceptable to, 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 to appoint him now.
Yeah, and so I, I was the one who sought guidance from the state office on this back a couple months ago, and they did say if you don't know the name of the appointment in advance on the posted agenda, it's, it's legal to post without a name, but would he work on the second and third if he's appointed today?
I could certainly ask him, yes.
If we appoint...
I wanted to check with you guys first to see if you wanted him to come in earlier.
If he, well, I just think if we can appoint him next week, then he can work on the ninth and 10th.
Are you comfort, would you be comfortable if I made a motion to?
I think, I think it's legal. I just think it's, if it's possible, why not post a name?
Right, so it wasn't, so it wasn't, it wasn't possible until right before the meeting, so I would, I would make a motion to appoint him now so we can get the most, can get the most benefit of the on, on, on training and hours. That would be my motion.
I'll second. So is he gonna be working this weekend or not?
Because we have to appoint him.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you have to appoint him first, and then I will call and ask him.
Well, the thing is, from what I got from the state, because I did reach out to the state.
So what if he was able to work Wednesday? I mean, what if he can't work this weekend, but he can work Wednesday? That still doesn't solve the...
Well, my point being, I reached out to the state, and this is completely legal. It's completely legal to, and I have the thing somewhere in here. It's completely legal to put an appointment on the agenda without a name if you're not aware 48 hours in advance or whenever you post the agenda. However, it's definitely advisable to post the name if you have it, and you have the time to. And so to the extent that we can appoint him next week and achieve the same results, let's do that.
But we just wouldn't change, achieve the same results. He still, he, he can have the opportunity to come in earlier and, and have the benefit of more training. So that's, that's, that's the difference.
Well, I don't know if he's going to come in earlier. That's what I don't understand.
But it's a, so it's a chicken and egg thing. You have to appoint him to find out if he can come in early. So I, my, my recommendation, and my, my motion on the floor, is to appoint him. Since we know it's legal, and there was no, we did not have his name prior to, I, this is the first time I'm hearing his name. And, and again, look, the whole idea is to, the better trained people we have, the better service serves from people in Monterey. So the, so to have somebody come in and spend the most amount of time, and David and Beth are definitely leaving, so for somebody to have the most amount of time, it'll only benefit us more, doesn't it?
Well, I, but it's legal.
If he's not gonna come in this weekend, it's a moot point. And I'm here.
I'm here this weekend.
I think you have to take a chance that he can get here this weekend, because who is fired?
Mickey's gonna fire him, but he's gonna be...
Fire him. Okay, you just have to work it out. And then if he does come in this weekend and he doesn't like it and he quits, we still have, you know?
Then we still have some time.
Got that for a week.
All right, so we, we had a second, we're having discussions, Helen, you have to give a...
So, and my other question is, where, we are hiring him for up to 18, 19 and a half hours a week?
Yeah. He's aware of the schedule. He's aware that there will be discussions to change the Sunday hours. He would prefer to change Sunday hours, but if they say the same, he's okay with that.
Interesting. So if we keep the Sunday hours and add 15 minutes ahead of and behind each shift, is he eligible for health insurance? Because aren't they at 19 and a half in the summer?
It's not a consistent 20 hours a week?
Because it's only half the year? So half the year isn't consistent, okay. I'm learning things every day.
Yeah, the whole thing's a learning experience.
Yeah, if he'll train this weekend, and we didn't know his name in advance, I believe it's legal under open meeting law, and I'll second, or I did second it.
Okay, so this, the... So I, I vote yes.
Yes.
No.
Okay.
So, call him, listen, and we'll get him over here.
I know what time we leave here, and I'll call him at night. Let's take a little break.
Okay, so, all right, so now we're, I'm sorry, now we're number two. Open meeting law complaint, Donald Coburn against John Wiegand. So I'll read the description of alleged violation. In his open meeting law complaint of 3/4/2022, Monterey Selectman John Wiegand attacks the adequacy of the minutes of the select board executive session of 2/2/2022. The minutes which concerned an ongoing investigation were, were not then published. Nevertheless, in his complaint, he described some of the content of the minutes in these words. Quote, "Topics are missing or falsely recorded and stated incorrectly." Parentheses, "I.e. Coburn contacting investigator via emails." Comma, "Mr. Weiss trying to manipulate the investigator." Comma, "Questioning investigator judgment." Comma, "Improper questions from Mr. Weiss." Comma, "And investigators telling Mr. Weiss he could take over the investigation." Comma, "The reasons behind the sexual harassment. No further investigation is not accurate," et cetera. End parentheses, end quotes. Mr. Wiegand also filed a full recording of the executive session with the town clerk. In parentheses, how one of the subjects of the investigation. And with the attorney general's open meeting law section. Mr. Wiegand is in his second year on the select board, during which he's filed many open meeting law complaints. He's also filed in Massachusetts, he's also been a Massachusetts lawyer for many years. He's participated in a number of select board executive sessions, and knows that they are private until minutes are approved for publication. He knew these minutes were approved without authorization for publication. Clearly, he intentionally violated the open meeting law, therefore substantial fines should be imposed. And then in the field of what you want this public body to, what you want the public body to take in response to your complaint, it's, says, "There is no action the select board can take in these circumstances. Therefore, is left to the attorney general to impose a sufficient financial penalty to deter selectman Wiegand from committing violations of this nature." Please note, that the computer program did not permit me to mark, quote, "individual," end quote, end quote, "city slash town," end quote. Donald Coburn, 3/19/2022. Okay.
All motion to designate John Wiegand to respond to this complaint? Is that what we do? Well, it's, it's, it's to him, so I... But it's always to a body, as, and you can talk about a specific person, but you want to designate a respondent?
So I think, I think that's fine. I think, yes. It's, it's the Wiegand to respond to the complaint. Oh, it, I don't, you want to have this, oh, we'll vote on that.
Well, it's not what we usually do. We designate a respondent. Is that not the process?
Okay, so I will second your...
You're shaking your head. Is that not? I don't know. Oh, wait, anyway, all right, I got it, I got it. So I second your motion.
Oh, yes?
Yes.
Okay, participate, so, so we're gonna move on. Number three, request from Renewable Energy Working Group to contact council attached.
So you, you listed the questions that they'd like to ask council?
I would motion to allow Peter to ask his question to council and any necessary follow-up questions, questions of town council regarding solar panels.
Okay. Okay, which they refer to as PV sites, which are photovoltaic. Okay, so I, I, I second that. I see Peter's on the call, if you, I don't know if you want to speak. Oh, Peter?
I'm not just Peter's agent.
Oh, okay. Okay. Good eye, but I guess maybe not. So I seconded it. Any, any response from the, from the audience? It's good. They've got, they're, they're coming together with some good, some good, these are good questions, and I'm glad that they're reaching out and keeping the board up to date. So I vote yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Number four, Conservation Commission agent appointment, Kim Weatherall. Chris?
Hi.
Hi.
Chris Boyer, Conservation Commission. I tried to get the other two guys to come, but they had prior commitments. We're glad we're here to help out the town when it's needs it. We have rather full agendas so far, but luckily we don't have many square foot parking lots and shopping centers and so on to deal with. But just a little background, when you're a commissioner, you have, like on the planning board, the opportunity to take classes and be educated, which you do. I took eight beginners classes on what it is to be a conservation commissioner, what the values and functions of wetlands are, how to hold meetings and so forth. I took about six or eight additional advanced courses. And in addition to the, to those, presented at the Massachusetts Association of Conservation Commissioners. And actually presented the case that we won a financial award from somebody who cut some trees down on the lake. In the wetlands law, it says, "We're the authorities." They say, "You guys, the conservation commission, know what's going on. You're appraised at the activities, you're appraised at the law, and you're appraised at the regulations. So you guys know what to do." I was thinking we could have an agent and no conservation commission as a way to kind of streamline operations in town, but a few people I've talked to said, "No, you have to. The law says, there has to be commissioners. You don't have to have an agent." And so, you know, I thought that was a good idea, and that's not gonna work out. So it's a technical world. It includes a great deal of detail. Requires a lot of time to go to the sites and see what's going on, rather than making an opinion when you're sitting at a desk not having been there. It requires a lot of technical reading. This is a simple one. One page of drawings, but about 35 or 45 pages of documentation supporting their case. This is a new house on Hoopahwood, so. It requires, this, we assign cases, everybody rotates through. This one is mine, so I now have to go with the engineer for, for 5 minutes an hour and walk around and get it from my head, so we can respond to the applicant in their duty. So what we're doing is looking for an agent. We had three resumes, and we had knowledge of Kim Weatherall as a person who'd been working here before. And the three resumes, they were kind of young, not, not the most experienced people, but doesn't mean they're not trainable. But we talked to Kim. We made some assessment. We understand that there were operational and personal differences during the prior commission's work with her. They're not here anymore. We are. We have a different attitude towards people who work and so on. That doesn't mean it's gonna be perfect, but we would like to try using her. I'm not sure exactly of the numbers, but I think, I think it was like 25 bucks an hour for 25 hours a month. Was that, yeah, okay, so 625 bucks a, a month. I keep track of all my hours in my life because I built, like, yeah, you might took. The last time I was on the commission, I was going north of 680 hours in a year while doing 40 hours of my own work. It's a lot of time. You gotta do it right. You gotta pay attention. So, anyway, we think an agent would aid the future commissioner, would aid the town, and I don't think there's much arguing about that. I, I think the person we'd like to try is that person. So we're asking, we, we understand that we can't appoint them, that you guys have to, because they're an employee, you have to hire them or appoint them, whatever. I don't know the exact language, but that's what we're asking for.
So where did you get that information from?
Oh, which one?
That the select board appoints your agent.
I was looking, I don't know that for a fact, but I thought you guys approved employees, because, because she's...
She's out of town employee. She's your employee. She gets paid.
She's a town...
Okay, there is a piece of the law that says we can hire consultants, is that right?
And appoint.
Okay, I, you know, I don't, yeah, okay.
You can.
So maybe we can.
So can I ask you a question? Can I have?
Sure, fire away. Fire away.
So, so currently, there are three people on the conservation?
Yes.
Okay. You, Mr. Lovett.
And, and Mr. Dempsey.
Mr. Dempsey.
Yeah.
Did you have a, did you have a meeting about this agent?
Yeah, we, we, let's see, this is March. At, at our March meeting, we talked about the idea amongst the three of us. It was one of our agenda items, I think, yeah.
Okay, and so all three of you are, I, is, is unanimous?
It was unanimous, oh, yeah.
That's where I'm, that's where I'm going, I just wanna make...
Yeah, everybody was, was all happy, and, and I said, "Well, I'll go talk to the select board."
Did you have a meeting to review the resumes, or was it just done privately?
We passed them around at the meeting.
In a meeting?
Yeah. Yeah, they came in email. That's the original, yeah.
Did you advertise the position?
We didn't.
Who did?
Wherever the, the resumes came from was an ad for somebody. I mean, they just didn't show up, I don't think. Somebody advertised.
Who do you think that was?
I don't know. I don't know.
That would be Michael Sisser of the former conservation commission.
Yeah, I think the former conservation commission did that.
Oh, okay, so, so, yeah, it was advertised.
Did you ever see the job description?
No.
Oh, so you, you don't know what the job description was? And whether it's, and you want to hire employee without knowing what the job description says?
So...
We have a job description.
I, I mean, he said that the other, I am here, actually, and I think another commissioner is here, and I hope that Steve will allow us to talk.
So, so, you're talking to somebody who, how long have you, have, were you on?
He's, he's got a long history on the contract, Steve, come on.
No, I understand that. So what I'm saying is, you're, you know, he's, you've got the experience on the conservation commissions, not like, so, you know.
Isn't it the fact that the, the money for the person comes from the money you collect for doing your work?
We get three streams of fees. The town gives us a, a budget line. And then we collect 100% of the RDA fees, and there's a 60/40 split with the state.
And that's the money that's...
That's the money used, yeah.
You know, this proceeding is, is totally off the wall. John is right. It's an independent commission. It has its own income. It has the statutory authority to appoint, and it shouldn't be on the agenda, and there shouldn't be questions of Chris, of you, or him, or anybody.
Be that as it may, it's been Mike's...
Excuse me, though. What? I can't raise my hand, so I just wanted to have a chance to speak. That's all. Not now, but later.
Let me finish talking, and then you have a chance to speak. Go ahead. So I was, as I was saying, be that as it may, Monterey has always, the select board has always appointed, since we were first appointing the agents, which hasn't been that long, but Monterey, the select board has still been appointing these, these agents. Now, if, if it's true that it only needs to be the contract, then, then we can both...
But it won't be an employee. They can't appoint an employee, they can appoint a consultant.
If the town, so, so there you go, so, so the select board can't appoint.
So, there isn't a consulting to us for our business.
But Chris, that consultant is only for specific jobs. It's not a consultant in that respect, so they are hiring as an employee.
No, they're hiring consultant because the job description says consultant, and it should have been advertised with the job description. Oui, was that done?
Hi.
I think the law, and I will cite, it's chapter forty, section eight C. It says, "The commission may appoint a director, clerk, consultant, and other employees, and make contract for materials and services within available funds, insofar as the same are not supplied by other parts."
But, Chris, what does her job, what does the job description say?
All right, so I've, I've got the perfect solution. So, we're going to, we're gonna have a vote on appointing it, you can have a vote on appointing it, and between the two of us?
I'd like, I'd like to know if the other conservation, current conservation commission agents are aware of a disciplinary letter that was formulated because of the previous-
I've read all the documentation that's been-
Are they aware of the, of the complaints and the heinous emails that she wrote to me and the other conservation commission agents that reflect anti-Semitic comments?
All right, all right.
And there was a hearing, my hearing, that I can speak from, this is the horse is now speaking. And you were there, Steve?
Yes, as a matter of fact.
And does the town feel that it was appropriate, or did they deem it inappropriate?
Even the town attorney said it was inappropriate.
Right, and did she refuse to go to a mediation on it and then resign?
Actually-
Did she go ahead and bash me and Jeremy and State Line?
Because obviously, I'm not being able to get a word in edgewise over here.
No, because you won't listen to the facts. You're gonna make your own determination.
Okay, so, Chris, you've read all the materials, heard the stories, you've seen the movie of the week about this. I was there, and Mr. Covert was there.
And where?
At this, there's a discussion about-
It wasn't a discussion, it was an executive hearing.
Oh, okay.
So, let's, let's be clear, that's a big difference, Steve. Get your terminology correct.
There is a very big difference, okay? So, with all that understanding, okay? And hearing from, you know, hearing from you and taking into account of your, your many years of service on the conservation commission in Monterey, and, and the recommendations of the three members of the conservation commission, I would make a motion that, that we hire Kim Wetterall as a conservation commission agent.
Absolutely not. We have no authority to appoint her.
I'd like to say something. I think you should table this, and Chris needs to talk to the ex-chair and other commissioners and do some research and find out what really happened. He hasn't bothered, he never called anybody. This is a disciplinary letter. You had an illegal executive session without informing us. We asked you to put it in the file, you ignored us, you didn't respond to us. Chris, there's a lot of issues that's going to come back to the concom. I think you should table it and have a discussion with us.
We're in office.
What?
We're in office now, we were appointed by the select board, so we're doing the business as best we can to give the services to the town, citizen, and the applicants as best we can. That's our goal. We have no other issues going on. Does that make sense?
Nope.
Am I out of, am I out of line because we want to assert the town?
There's a serious employee discipline problem, and you're ignoring it.
I'm not ignoring it.
Yes, you are.
We get along with people.
So, the law, we'll give it or not, we got along yesterday, just great. Why are you opposed to having a meeting with us and learning more?
I'm not opposed to.
So, then I think you should, as minimum-
I'm not interested, no offense to you, sir.
All right, you do your point, you've made his point, do you have a second?
It sounded to me like, from the law that Chris read and what Don Covert said, that it's not the select board's business who the conservation commission hires or a consultant.
Okay, we always try to keep you guys informed.
I, I could give a talk, so we can-
I mean, she's important.
As a consultant.
No, she's not a consultant.
She is a consultant.
No idea what you're talking about.
I do, too.
Shut up, Don.
Do you want to get the sergeant here?
Yes.
You have someone to get sergeant here?
What?
Should I get the sergeant here, face this guy from early?
I don't think so.
By the way, that was one of the courses we have. I prefer this place at meetings.
Well, again, now that I-
Thank you.
Now that I've seen, now that I've seen the Oscars, I feel prepared. So, we will not have any more outpers in the, in the, in the audience. The chair does have the right to remove individuals who are causing such, although I prefer not to, so don't make me do it. Let's continue, shall we? Proposal for transportation committee to decrease the hours on Sunday from ten AM to four-thirty year-round. Okay, now, this, these are fighting words.
Mickey's got her hand up.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I should wait till you get your motions going or whatever else.
So, well, well, actually, I'll have the discussion before the motion, because I've, I've got, I, I have some issues, I have some issues, so, yes.
My thought is, why not just have the extended hours for June, July, and August? When people are here on weekends and they're gonna have dinner or a barbecue on Sunday late afternoon, and they already know they gotta get the corncups up to the dump by six o'clock. And if you do it at four-thirty, four o'clock, it doesn't mean time to have a barbecue. And, and it's just, I mean, then we got garbage sitting around, these are people who are leaving, and then they have things sitting around, and we have all kinds of problems. So, I just think for those three months, it makes sense to keep it at the six o'clock.
So, that, so, so I was on the board when we discussed, when we discussed hours many years ago, when we put this new, when we first had the new transportation open. And yes, as I mentioned in the last meeting, it was, it was, it was specifically late hours on Sunday because there would be concern was, that summer, that summer people would, if they couldn't get to the transportation before they left and went back to where their first homes, that a lot of that, that trash would either end up on the street, or, or in a, in a garbage can, in their garage, and then they've got animals. And it was, it was to, it was to give people an option who are coming up here as second homeowners, and the fact that Monterey has two-thirds of the population were just strictly second homeowners and, and, you know, and up here part-time. So, that is my concern. I, I, I think, I think for June, July, and August, it might be a good, certainly a good compromise. I understand that the, the transportation people, yeah, but that's with, it's available to the public, so you have to come up and get it.
You started it last week.
What? I know, I ended up taking, I ended up eating the whole thing at the end of the meeting. Anyway, so, that-
Yeah, and they've extended the daylight saving time further.
Did they do that?
Well, no, now, uh-
Well, I think they're gonna make it around that, that's what they want, that's what they want to do that. But, I mean, even right now, it starts much earlier. According to, I have a, I have a radio clock alarm that changes the time, except it's on the old time. So, in a couple of weeks, and it hasn't changed yet for the daylight saving time. I mean, I said it, but it'll, it'll do its own thing again. And, and it's extended on both ends. I think it's just a weekend on November, because it goes after Halloween now, but it's much earlier in the spring, so I don't think it's necessary this time of year, really.
So, what would the board, what does the board think about, about that, that idea that Mickey came up with, which is June, July, and August? Because, again, it's, it's done for a reason, it's not just, it wasn't just arbitrary. And it's my understanding that, that in the past, when, when the, when the, when the dump used to close earlier, they used to find that's a garbage. People just, you know, it's awesome. Not that people are gonna do that here again, but, but that was a purpose, that's the purpose of it having openly on Sunday.
I like June to August, I like Memorial Day to Labor Day.
Always the same thing.
All the same thing.
Yeah, if you cover Labor Day weekend.
My concern is, if we have, I think it's what, we're at nineteen and a half? If we do fifteen before and after each shift, without the hour and a half extra, I believe. I think doing the four-thirty to six PM on Sunday pushes us over the twenty hours. Only three months a year if we do this proposal, but I'm, it's my understanding that if we have an employee for more than twenty hours a week, then they must be offered health insurance policy.
So, how does that add up? That's, I don't know, that, that makes a lot of sense.
But, and I, and I should say that I completely support the fifteen minutes before and after, before closing and after, or before opening and after closing, because it's unrealistic to expect that they're leaving, you know, at exactly four-thirty PM. They're definitely staying later to close up. But, when I talked to Dave a while back, he said, well, this weekend, he said, "The last couple Sundays, they counted how many people came in, four-thirty to six PM on Sunday, and it was like five one time and ninety," which is not a lot for an hour and a half. But, in the summer, that number probably goes way up. So, it seems like a reasonable thing, and Rebecca has her hand up.
Oh, okay, hi Rebecca. You're on mute, you're on mute, can't hear you.
Sorry, 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 you would think after three, yes, I'd learn. Why don't you just open later on Sunday during those months and stay open later and open later, so you still have the same number of hours, it's just later in the day? So, maybe one to six rather than ten to four?
Well, it's just a matter of-
If you work, the extra time be, to make, between twenty hours and eighteen hours, to keep it open later for people leaving Monterey on a Sunday, just open later in the morning and just be open and stay open, you know, so you have the same amount of hours, you're just shifting it. Instead of ten to four-thirty, it could be one to six.
My concern would be that there's definitely people who are trying to leave in the morning or eighteen-four at lunch.
Well, you're not gonna please everybody then, so-
Yeah, no, of course.
It doesn't matter.
Can't please everybody, but, um-
Let's work it backwards, is it Mickey, is that what you're doing with your pencil?
Oh, I, I did, I was, it's nineteen and a half hours with the opening ten to six on Sunday and the extra half hour.
For each shift, extra half hours?
Yeah, because you've got five and a half, five and a half, and then eight and a half.
So, we still don't reach twenty?
Still, just below twenty, nineteen and a half.
And that's from, and that's from?
That's the, the eight to one, and eight to one is five, and then eight to six is eight, I mean, the ten to six, it is, is eight, and then an extra hour and a half.
Oh, I gotta brush up on my math, my bad.
Well, that's why I got a pencil, and that's why I don't have an eraser anymore on my pencil.
Okay, so, um, so, the twenty hours is not a concern regardless of what we do unless we add hours. My bad. So, Memorial Day, Memorial Day to Labor Day sounds reasonable.
I'm not opposed to short, especially if we're gonna get five cars, just stay open an extra hour and a half and only get five people or nine people. But- Yeah, well, but the idea is if it changes with the clock, instead, we could have a change from Memorial Day to Labor.
Right, so that, that would be the only period where, where would be extended hours on Sunday. Everything else would be the same truncated hours, now, our same hours that we have that we've been doing winter hours. So, we'd have, we'd have, well, winter hours, we have standard hours, with the exception of Memorial Day to Labor Day, where we have extended hours on Sunday. And that, we'll double check to make sure that it stays under the cap. And, and again, anything to prevent, you know, having highway guys go around and starting to, you know, pick up garbage, because that's, that's the whole reasoning behind it. And again, also, we would have them do a, we would ask them to, to, to do an analysis, we do analysis, seeing how many people actually use it between four-thirty and six. If in summer, you don't get as many people as we think, then we can always, we can always roll that, we can always roll that back, but at least have a, at least have a, have a test of it. So, that would be, so, what I would, what I would propose is that, is that we make this recommendation, can we make this recommendation?
Which recommendation?
To, that, that, that we would have, the hours that, as they exist right now, with the exception of Labor Day to, with the exception of Memorial Day to Labor Day, in which Sunday hours would be from ten AM to six PM.
And the, so the winter hours would go from Labor Day to Memorial Day, summer hours, Memorial Day to Labor Day. Instead of changing when the clocks change, we change on those two holidays. That's my understanding.
Okay, all works?
That's good.
Now, what do you have now?
No, we change when the clocks change.
Yeah, we change when the clocks-
You just, the hours in the winter time, right?
Yeah, it's the same hour, same winter and summer hours, it's just, instead of six months of summer hours, we have three months of summer hours.
Exactly. So, that would be my motion.
How about five-thirty? Why don't we make it five-thirty? Five-thirty actually means almost six, you give them another fifteen minutes to close up.
But I think Mickey's correct, people are gonna be having barbecues before they leave, you actually want to make it as, as late as possible, but, so, I mean, the later you can make it, the less of a chance that there's garbage on the streets.
As people are used to, six o'clock.
Not only should we see how many people come from four-thirty to six, we should see what kind, are they doing barbecues?
Yes.
And what they have.
And what they say.
What they have.
Excellent.
Okay, so, good, so, so Mickey is, Mickey is in charge of monitoring barbecues.
Why would he order it, right?
Yeah, but they can't compost their-
Nobody can compost anyone, check. Sorry?
Okay, I'll second the motion to make the summer hours just from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
So, I go, yes?
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, number six, human resources and professional mediation. Even though it's not a word, irregardless of investigations, I believe that, that this board should immediately, search out and, and use the media, a professional mediation for any employees that the board deems are in conflict. It's a proactive, it's not even proactive, it's, it's an active way of, of trying to avoid any complications moving forward. There are professional mediation services, the only thing I would request is it not be somebody from Monterey, outside of the town. There are professional mediation services available. I think we should find a, I think we do have some funds that may be available, and, and that we have, and that we present that as something that's available to town employees. If you select board from, you're not, select board are not, we're not professional mediators, we shouldn't be involved in human resources, but this is something that I think we should implement immediately.
So, how, and I'm just wondering, how, where are the funds, is this something to add to the budget?
So, um-
To make a request for, you know, because everything costs money.
Everything, right, now, good, now you're thinking, now you're thinking like this way, because usually I'm the one that usually, roles were reversed, so, good, I'm glad somebody's thinking out there. So, well, listen, I, personally, I think that there's, there may be some money, even in, in this fiscal year, what do we have left in, let's say, select board expenses?
A couple thousand, I think.
So, I think this is so important that- So I think this is so important that, um, uh, that there, you know, uh, that there, uh, that we could use some money from select board expenses. Or, or there's another line that, that would be appropriate, probably not, right? Okay, um, but I, I don't think, I don't think we should, uh, I don't think it's worth, it's worth waiting. Um, there is, there is another discussion about actually how that becomes an item on the budget for next year. But I, uh, but I think it's so important that I, that I don't think we should wait up until the next fiscal year. If you can make it available now, um, I can think of some individuals that I think would benefit from it. Um, and I think we should, uh, we should, we should do it, yes?
Steve, with all due respect, uh, mediation is not the answer to conflicts between employees. Mediation's used to get to the bottom line of something, two parties. What, what this town needs is something more in line of coaching, where employees could be coached, and so that they can have a meeting of the minds. You do not need a mediator, you need a coach. And I agree with you, it should be someone with some group from outside Monterey, some disinterested party. But mediation, I think, is a serious mistake.
Serious?
Serious mistake.
What, what do you think the negative implications?
Because you have no, there's, there's no end, there's no end objective. You, in mediation, you have an end, you have two parties, a union and, and employer, trying to negotiate a contract, like you see in baseball and football and basketball. There is a bottom line to continue with the operations and have everybody satisfied. That's not what's on the table when you have conflicts between employees.
All right, so.
Now, it might sound a little semantic, but the world is a huge world out there, and between mediation and coaching is a chasm bigger than this town.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take your expertise on this, because I don't have the expertise on it, right? So, uh, maybe I'm using the wrong terminology.
Right.
Um, I'm looking for a professional entity that will, will serve as a conflict resolution.
Right.
Type of thing between two existing employees.
And that's something that.
Whatever that's called, whatever that's called, that's what I want.
It's not mediation.
All right.
Justin and I spoke about it quite, quite a number of months, if not a year ago. I think that coaching is the right thing, and not mediation, not arbitration, not mediation. We have two lawyers here, I don't wanna get into the distinction between arbitration and mediation, but neither applies to issues within town employees, that's number one. Number two, it seems like we might be putting the cart before, and I understand the urgency, I understand the urgency, please don't, please don't. But we're, we're sort of caught in a quagmire of having no human resource manual and having no human resource leadership in this town. With all due respect to the select board, you have none of it, okay? And to be able to stand up and make statements about what we need for human resources, I think, is not in our best interest. And I'm not trying to denigrate anybody on the board, but no one's bubbling up on top as being a HR director.
So, so hello?
Which doesn't mean that things don't need to be taken care of. So we, there, there, there is an issue, right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you always, you, you always strike me as a, as a, as a man of action. Um, you know, it's, there is at some point, some things that, um, you know, that we can, that we can do to, I mean, if we, if we know, we know that there are issues between certain employees, um, it's not, uh, that there's something that we can do to make the situation better immediately. Um, yes, I think there needs to be a whole H R. Infrastructure that needs to be, that needs to be put together, that, that cannot be done, oh, that, that, that cannot be done overnight. But I think that, um, that this is something that we can, this is something that we can do, that at least will make things, or at least will attempt to make things more pleasant, right? You can only do it.
I do, I agree, I agree, we're, 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 we're between a, a hard rock and a wall, but, but, it's not, the, the fix is not arbitration mediation.
Okay, so, I didn't realize, I didn't even realize that there, that there was something called coaching. I'm not, this is not, it's not my business, so, um, if that is what it is, um, then, um, perhaps we can do some research to find out professional coaching, um, uh, entities. Uh, and, and, but I would make a recommendation that we, that we, that we, that we searched, that we searched them out, and, um, and at least make a, make a good, a good phased attempt to, um, making things nicer around here, um, in advance of, again, a formal H R., which needs to be done. Um, and, um, but at least it's something that we can, that we can do right away. So, um, with the board's permission, I would do research and present information to the board. I was gonna reach out to somebody actually who knows a bit about this, they probably would have corrected me at that, at that point. Unless, just unless, unless it's something that we'd like to do, I know you're good with research.
No, that's fine, the one, the one point I wanna make is that the special article for shared H R. Manager Consulting is budgeted at five thousand, and maybe we should request more than five thousand dollars if we're talking about a number of things related to human resources. Whether we can get the hu- whether we can get the handbook updated with the funds that we have from this year, or not, whether we need, whatever services we need. I think I asked earlier, maybe we raise that article to ten thousand dollars? But, and name it human resources, but that's just my, my opinion.
But didn't we hire K P. Law because one lawyer was proficient in this area, the other one was proficient in H R.?
Well, I think.
Why are we going, why did we hire them?
Not everything is a legal issue, there are things that, it doesn't, that you don't need a lawyer, you need a psychologist or whatever, I don't know.
Counselor.
Person, I don't know, and so, it's not always legal counsel that we're seeking, sometimes it's, uh, not legal counsel.
The also, K P. Also specifically didn't want, didn't we reach out to them initially when we were talking about the investigation? They specifically did not want to get involved in, in specific, uh, employee matters.
They didn't wanna get involved because they said they'd be too expensive for, uh, for the workers.
Yeah, well.
They thought, well, so is the other side.
I mean, originally you said that, all right, so, um, so, all right, so, I'll do a little research, I'll present some options to the board. Um, I, if other board members wanna do some research as well.
For coaching?
For coaching. Okay, um, final budget review and, and, uh, and review of warrant, so.
So I didn't give it to you because I'm waiting still for the, for this petition, um.
Oh, and also, finance committee didn't, didn't finish their job.
That is correct, they only had two members present last night, and John Silver signed off after sixteen minutes.
So, I would like to, so, I would make motion table this until, uh, when, when is their next scheduled meeting?
I think she just said she was gonna try for next Tuesday.
Can we meet with them too, or not? Because I got, I, we, there's conflicting, uh, opinions going on, because at one point, and I don't know if we ever voted on it, but at least John Silver and I agreed, so if we didn't vote, it doesn't matter at all, but, uh, to aim for a hundred thousand dollars left in free cash. But then we changed what was, what the special articles were, they wanted everything to be spent with ARPA money. Then we didn't spend the ARPA money, and now there's not gonna be a lot left in free cash, like twenty thousand dollars.
Right, so as of last night, I can tell you that, I mean, unless Katrina shows up to the next meeting, John was not interested in giving any suggestions or approving the budget as is. He wants a five percent cut.
Okay, well, my point being, before that, my point being, there are some disagreements about how much free cash would be left, how much would be spent on the tax levy, or to reduce the tax levy. Because those two numbers are directly, are inversely related, as one goes up, one goes down, and I thought we would, you know, uh, I don't remember if, I guess we didn't vote, but I was hoping that we would leave more money in free cash. And also, I was wondering, are we combining the three stabilization accounts into one?
Something you guys need to tell me for the warrant.
Because I, I thought that we had agreed to do that. And I also am curious about, uh, the proposition to an app underwrite, because I think it's a good idea. Because it would be something to hold us accountable, and if we needed to go over, we could, as you, you usually override it to, uh, two and a half. Um, but it would be to hold us a little bit more accountable.
Well, so, I would like the finance committee to.
So I would like to meet with them jointly if possible. Because I feel like they're still remaining.
So why don't we reach out to see if, uh, if they're amenable to having a joint meeting on, uh, Tuesday? Um, when they're, after they're, or, you know, because there's enough time to, to get to, to post.
I mean, if there's, um, if they're meeting anyways, why can't we join them?
Right, we just have to do a share.
Did you say that you voted at the finance committee meeting and agreed to something?
I don't think that we did, but we had joint meetings often. What, what I'm saying is that I don't think that we voted there.
Me, you and John?
No, John and I can't vote on anything, because he's on the finance, whenever we took a vote, the finance committee vote, would vote, or the select board, no, separately. It was never, I was trying, I can't honestly recall, but there was discussion about a target for free cash. And I'm concerned that, in the mix of things, we forgot about any kind of a target for free cash.
So the target for free cash is generally not voted on, because it's always what's left over after you do all the things, so you pay for all the things that are, that are on the warrant, and what, and see what's left. I mean, there's, you could, you could have a general target, and you're never going to be at that target.
You're talking about the target that's left over, after this budget is presented.
Yes, because.
Not as a target for next year.
No, and, 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 and the point being, if you spend ten thousand more to reduce the tax levy, you have ten thousand left.
Right.
And that was kind of, anyway. I just, I wouldn't mind meeting with them jointly, because I feel like some things have changed since we last met with them. Namely, they asked us to spend all kinds of ARPA funds that the select board decided not to spend.
Speaking of that.
Yeah.
I heard on the radio that Springfield, what they did was have all the nonprofits in the city apply for ARPA funds. And then the, whoever was in charge of the ARPA, I guess the municipal council, they all looked at their applications, and they approved the applications, I, instead of doing a survey, why don't we just draw up an application and, you know, one of the nonprofits couldn't apply, and.
It will come up, that's item nine, I got, I got, I think it's the same two, but I wouldn't mind me joining with this.
Okay, so we, we're gonna do that on Tuesday.
What's, what's item eight?
So, I was wondering if the board would be open to their, the line one twenty is administrative assistant salary. The request is fourteen thousand, ninety-four dollars.
Four, what?
No, it's only eight.
It got lowered?
Yeah, because I was asked to.
I was on the three-ten, uh, so that's outdated, isn't it?
I sent one last week, I believe, it's, um, it's currently at eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars.
Anyways, eight thousand four hundred and fifty-six dollars, so I was off by five thousand dollars, my math today is not good. Um, I was wondering if, um, you know, one of the suggestions was to maybe have a separate select board secretary? And, uh, if that line item, and I don't know at what point that would need to be decided, but we could be used, and, um,
so it's, it's my understanding, totally not reading it right, it is, is that, that assistant, whatever that assistant is, that, that line, that would be one of their, that would be one of their jobs, it would be minutes, various regulations and such. Um, however, um, that is a very small amount of money for a lot of activity, but, but, but the, but the finance committee didn't wanna make it a full-time position.
The select board minutes are not currently included in them, that was not something that, when I asked for the position, that was part of it. It's for the planning board, the finance committee, the PRX commission, the building inspector, and then backup for me. And it's only nine hours a week, because the finance committee didn't want it to be eligible for.
Yeah, so you'd have to, you know.
Well, couldn't we do like fifteen? Because I know if you combine a ten and a nine, you standard twenty. But if you hire a standalone fifteen, could we, what I'm saying is, could we request six hours a week in a select board or not?
So, this was the reason why I lowered it, was because if you have someone, I think I mentioned this before, let's say your mother or the girl that's working as the Council on Aging Outreach worker, they want to apply for it, and they end up being the right candidate, depending on the number of hours of this job, it will push them over twenty hours, and then we have to offer health insurance. And I believe John Silver's comment was, well, you just wouldn't hire them. And I don't think that's a good way to look at it, if that candidate is the best candidate.
We don't, we cannot do that.
We need a select board secretary, that's what we need.
So you can add a separate line item if you'd like for select board secretary, and not include it as part of this position.
Well, I, I, I actually happen to agree with John Silver, that if we advertise for a fifteen-hour position, you just don't hire someone who has, who is working six or more hours, and I don't know, I, I see some value in, in, in someone.
So what if they're the only person that applies?
Well, that'd be tough.
So my recommendation would be to, I'm not, to hire, to, to keep the, to have this person, the way I look at it is, this, this item is a brand-new item, so I would hire this person and see what they can accomplish, and, and build the job from there. That, I thought was the, the whole idea, is to try to get, get somebody in here and start to work, start to work within, within the, the town government. Um, and, uh, and see, and see if this position is, is worthy of enlargement. Um, because we're creating something out of, you know, that didn't really exist before. And, uh, you know, uh, that's why, again, I, I pushed for it, because originally, I think, some people wanted to cut the whole thing out.
So what, what if we meet halfway, we do fifteen hours, in the off chance that our only candidates already work more than five hours for the town, we keep on looking? And we don't offer health insurance, but I think it's gonna be hard to find individual secretaries for these little positions. It's probably gonna be easier to find a fifteen-hour person. So my recommendation would be to raise the, uh, what's the line, administrative assistant? Administrative assistant salary to reflect an additional six hours a week, fif- with a total of fifteen hours a week. And that, I, I think six hours a week you can get done select board.
Under the purview of who, the select board or the administrative assistant?
The town administrator.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you're working, if they're working for the finance committee and the planning board and the select board, yeah, they, you get so many hours, but.
So I have a question, since there's two attorneys in the, in the, um, building. If we were to do that and not hire someone, because you say it would offer them health insurance, but they're the most qualified candidate, would we be opening ourselves up to a lawsuit, because?
Well, like transfer station attendant, if someone who already had any position in town that tries, applies for the transfer station attendant position, that's eighteen hours a week or nineteen and a half, however you calculate, they'd be offered health insurance, so I don't really think that's a concern for the creation of this position. Is, if you combine two of them, you get health insurance, I don't think that's a concern, that could happen in any job.
Totally, but with, in the job description itself, can't you put in, cannot be.
No, because if the total hours you work for the town is a consistent twenty hours or more a week, no matter how many positions you're filling, you are eligible for health insurance.
Right, you can't, you can't exclude, you can't, in the, in the diversity, say, you know, you cannot already have been working, you know, don't have an existing job in Monterey, I don't know, I'm just asking.
I'm asking, and I think maybe you should have counsel first, because I would be uncomfortable if a current employee was the best choice for the job applying for, and I say, sorry, you can't have it, because it's gonna make your health insurance eligible.
But, and, and I would be concerned, except this is not a unique situation. Because any, if, if any of the employees in town who don't currently get health insurance had applied for the transfer station job, we wouldn't have health insurance budgeted. we wouldn't have health insurance budget for them. So this is not the first time. I mean, anyone who works under twenty hours for the town, if they took on multiple positions, could uh, eventually work more than twenty and we don't ever, you know, worry about it. So I don't see why it should be a concern here. I really don't. It's hard for me to believe.
I guess because I'm telling you, I think there are people interested who currently work here and have to push them over twenty hours.
Well, we have to, we have to advertise and review resumes and hire and.
Exactly, but you don't know. So we got one applicant for the transfer station attendant, one. What if I only get one applicant for this position? I think you're you're boxing us into a corner. At at least you need to get town council's opinion on if you could, if that would be any kind of suit for for telling someone they can't have a job because it would push them into.
Cause out of minimum, we should, we should definitely, out of minimum, we should definitely do that.
I'm not gonna understand what you're trying to accomplish. You put this on independent, right?
Because it was a recommendation to get.
Independent person that works for the select board.
Right, and so.
What's the problem?
What's the problem is supposedly health insurance, but uh. I really don't think it's a problem because we, any, any of our positions that are under twenty, someone could potentially combine two or three and be over twenty and that's never, I mean, that could always happen. So I don't know why it's, I mean.
We should just restructure and put a new select board secretary in place and ask for the money. I don't think we can put it in the budget. I think we can ask the finance committee to do that, but I don't think we can put it in the budget ourselves. So if that's what you wanna do.
So why don't you bring this up at the Tuesday meeting?
At the joint meeting, sure. So and then my next item was just the leadership training, which I did a little research. And it seems like a lot of leadership trainings cost like thousands of dollars per person. Uh, like, for example, the UC Davis School of Management Leadership Program is eight weeks, seven to ten hours per week, and it costs fifteen hundred dollars per person. So while I'm, uh, you know, would like to take a leadership program, leadership training. Uh, I'm wondering how we're gonna budget for things like this.
You could read the book. There are lots of books on it, as you said, much cheaper than that.
So may, and and I also read articles that said maybe leadership training isn't really effective and not worthwhile.
I've experienced it and I can sort of. I I respectfully disagree. I've been in the business for forty-four years. Leadership training is very effective if it's done right. I don't know anything about UC Davis. But we've been in the business, my wife and I have been in the business since nineteen seventy-two, actually.
Could you, could you offer recommendations for leadership training?
No, I I don't think we would offer recommendations. We would offer options.
I I agree with that, that it is very effective. I just don't think it's something that's specialized in 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 towns.
Well, I I I don't think that's all that important, but.
There may not be.
But I, but one of the, one of the positive things that comes out of these kinds of programs is that they create networks and they continue staying in touch and working together for years going forward. One of the biggest attractions for the Harvard Business School MBA is to establish relationships, that people stay with it for the rest of their business experience. It's the same kind of networking that is so essential to good leadership. So to just, and 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 I don't, I don't wanna act like I'm Rockefellering, but I don't think fifteen hundred dollars is a lot of money for an eight-week leadership program.
Well, and the concern being we have zero money budgeted for it.
I I appreciate that and and you know, at at um at some point the pecuniarity is of looking at our budget and our tax rate is getting to the absurd rate.
No, but I mean, we don't have any money in this year's.
No, I.
We haven't raised any money and we're not planning on raising any for FY twenty-three.
Well, maybe that's another topic that you should raise with the finance committee when you meet on Tuesday, and I'm happy to come back to that meeting.
And there's also a lot of stuff on YouTube, a lot of stuff on YouTube about leadership and one of the greatest leaders in the world are on there. We just need to spend more and more money on. There's a lot of free resources out there.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not opposed. I just want to achieve optimal results and it's a recommendation and I want to follow recommendations. I don't wanna, you know, you know, be recommended something that could be helpful and not do it for one X, Y, or Z.
Would, so does leadership training for a group exist?
Absolutely.
So like the board, the person or persons would actually, I assume, coming here or going there or it's on virtually where they would actually just do it instead of, it has to be in an open meeting?
Yeah.
There's, there's.
Why not? I think it's.
There's, there are tons of these.
I think I think it'd be beneficial for.
There's a JM on the board. She's an expert in this. She heads executive training at Harvard Business School and executive, and execu- she's an expert in this.
Who's JM?
My wife.
Would you like to say something?
No.
So and anyways, I just don't want to, I just wanted to say that I'm willing to train, whether it costs money or not, but if it costs money, then it needs to be something that we ask town meeting for.
Maybe we should.
Yes, for money.
Why not?
But I don't know if it goes under like human resources or a separate article.
Human resources.
Yeah, and then I think that we should really raise that line or that special article.
To what?
Well, I don't know. In in particular, like I said, this UC Davis won fifteen hundred. The level's over here saying fifteen hundred isn't all that much.
So right now you have.
But then I'm also hearing maybe I can learn for free.
Right now we have a line for what? What is it on the line? How much is on the line? Five thousand or sixty-five hundred?
This year it's five thousand. Fifty-five hundred for this year. It's five thousand for this year, twenty-three.
But this is something totally different.
Well, human education. Well, human resources could be, could, 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 this is within that umbrella. So if you wanted to raise a line, ask to raise a line item to, let's say, ten thousand dollars, um, that would probably would cover all the various options that would be, that would be available to the, uh, to the town. It is, it's, I'm glad that we're having this conversation because this is, this is where the difference is between, um, between a select board perspective and a finance committee select board, and a finance committee perspective. Because obviously they would like us to spend as little as possible. But the select board has a broader understanding of challenges that 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 we face as a town. So it, and it's that conversation that is, um, you know, that 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 needs to happen on a, on a yearly basis. And it's not to just like, well, you guys are spending for no reason whatsoever, although we generally, select boards have heard that. You guys are, uh, we've heard on many occasions that we've, we spend like drunken sailors, um, which is a quote from, I won't even mention who. But it's not the case. If there are some things that need to be, that need to be paid for, then the only way to do it in in this particular town is to raise appropriate money, uh, but you can get pushback from the, from finance. So be prepared with, uh, you know, with some concrete, uh, positions. So, yeah, so if the board wants to, if the board wants to consider raising that line, um, as long as, I think we use, we use money the right way, then then I I don't, I personally, as a taxpayer, have no problem with it. But finance committee and people in Monterey may may feel differently or they may not.
Why don't you come up with a proposal, the amount of money? I think it should be a separate line item. Leadership training. It shouldn't go under HR. And just a request on a mount, ask.
You'd have to have proposals in order to come up with a specific number, um, because.
Well, I can do, I could do like a broad research and then see, you know, is it generally gonna cost this much or that much? And I I'll do research for next Tuesday, we're meeting the finance committee.
Fine, and here's your resource. That's what happens when you, when you, uh.
Okay, big man.
When you talk in a meeting and you get, you get volunteered. Yes, so ideally, it, I think, well, whatever. I I, you know, I I don't know. You know better what the, but the, but there was a recommendation that the board experiences leadership training.
So I have a question about the minutes. I think the only edits to the minutes are mine. Could I use the restroom briefly? Well.
Yes, yes, all right, so we're gonna, we're gonna take a, a short recess while everybody uses the, there are two bathrooms, by the way, in this. No, wait. Yes, there's one downstairs.
Oh, all right.
Learned something new every day?
Yes.
Multiple things today.
Yeah, that's very, it's very important, especially when certain people are using. You spend more time in town hall, you know where the bathrooms are.
I didn't even know there were any bathrooms.
Yes.
That that really means a whole lot.
Hey Janet. Hi Susan.
Susan, how are you feeling?
Um, not too bad. Trapped on the couch. I should get a new cast on Monday and hopefully I will be, I will have greater mobility available to me. I'm healing. It's a process.
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure it's a process. I've, I've never broken a.
Neither, right? Never broke, broken one.
Zero stars. Don't recommend.
Okay. Good to know. I'll, I'm gonna stay off horses too.
It it won't kick you off. He slipped in the mud. It could have been my foot.
Really? I don't know. I think, I did, I just think there's something that you should not do past the age of, oh, I could even mention the age, but, uh. Right, horses.
For me, it's getting to drive a car.
Ski, uh, if you have, if you haven't, if you haven't done a lot of it before, you shouldn't do it. Chop, chop wood. You know how many people come out here and, oh, I'm gonna chop wood. I'm like, I would not pick up an axe if I wasn't experienced at it or or use a, uh. No, no, no.
Chainsaw.
Chainsaw, chainsaw. Roger told me a story about some, I think it was him, where it got, he kicked back on him and it and it hit him in the head, but he was lucky, like he just kinda grazed him. He said, but it was in a different angle. It didn't get out. So any of that stuff is is horrible as it sounds. Kind of stay away from. All right, so we're going to, oh, let's wait till John comes back. Unless we can do, are there any ones that are absent? Well, there's one here where he was absent. So if you wanna wait till he comes back.
Yeah, no, let's do three eighteen. Okay, Linda, I don't have any questions about it because I.
No, I.
I only have a few questions about mine.
Nope, I I read, I read yours, um, and I think it's fine. So I made the motion to accept the minutes of three eighteen twenty-two with with the, um, qualifications that you, uh, Justin Dave.
Seven.
Yes, yes.
So, um, Hillel, since you you dragged me into this, um, I I will, I will make an offer. Justin, if you want, if you wanna talk about leadership training, I'm more than happy to discuss those options with with you if that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Sure.
We're at number nine.
Thank you.
Uh, we're, we're looking at the minutes from three twenty-three twenty-two.
Why are we approving minutes so quickly for leadership training? I mean, within a week? Why are we doing?
To avoid open meeting law complaints?
Well, I I have no problem. I made my own, as he says.
I didn't get a chance to, so why don't we table these? I mean, it's not a necessity.
Well, we have historically tabled that someone didn't get to them.
I'm making motion, we table these two minutes until.
Well, actually, the other minutes, the other minutes, we've already approved because you weren't there.
Well, as I said before, I.
Okay. Done. I, I made my.
Thank you.
American Rescue Plan Act Funds. Okay, so, Luke, you wanna explain this?
So my proposal, my proposal is that we make a ARCA webpage online on the town website linked from the select board page. And it would include basic information about the funds, such as the total amount available and the dates, let's say, months to be obligated by and expended by, and other documents that we have and links to state websites. And then it would just track how the select board spent the funds. Um, and it would announce that we are welcoming any suggestions about how to use the funds and inviting proposals for the use of our funds from town departments and staff beginning in April twenty twenty-two. And the applications will be reviewed on a rolling basis.
Used by the select board?
Yeah.
Okay, you put that in there. That's fine. I like that idea.
And part of, what got me thinking about it was other towns are doing it, like, and cities like Pittsfield and. I got an email from Capital Strategic Solutions, which, well, I don't really know much about that company, but.
So, yeah, so, um, I don't know who this company is. So when, so in general, when the, when the federal government comes out with large announcement of money that they're giving, that they're, that they're giving to governments or private individuals, um, there is a growth of companies that are more than happy to help you spend them for a modest fee. I think that the town of Monterey has the understanding enough to figure out what we need to spend money on and not engage up in organizations. There's already been, I don't know if you, if you've been watching the news, but there's always, there's already been significant amount of fraud when it came to COVID monies. And a lot of it is, is because it's very tempting for organizations to come out of the woodwork, um, to, uh, you know, to come out with ideas. So so I'm very cautious to even discuss with organizations that, um.
So this particular one.
So to be clear, I'm not actually, um, suggesting that we, you know, solicit the help of Capital Strategic Solutions. But I thought this could be our own way of getting community feedback on the use of the funds. We'd just be posting at the website and then, you know, announcing that we're welcoming suggestions and proposals. That way. That's fine, um, yeah.
Just a question. Have you checked as to whether you have to put this expenditure in the budget? Be before you can spend it, or are you thinking that you can adopt the budget without anything in there about ARCA? And then at some later point, the select board itself decides to spend it even though there's no line item? And then at some later point, the select board itself decides to spend it even though there's no line item?
So I, 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 so I believe, um, that you, that you have to, it has to appear as an item and you have to explain how you're trying to pay for it. And if it does not get paid for, how ultimately you can get.
So, so whose proposal would put off ARPA money until after a special town meeting?
Yeah, you got it.
It doesn't require a special town meeting or town meeting approval. We have the funds already, just like the COVID funds that we received from CARES. You're just, you're gonna have to approve expenditures and then we're gonna report to the state and if they say, no, that wasn't a, we're responsible for the money.
Right, so we can't just, but we can't just say, hey, you know, hey, wanna buy a fire department hose? Let's just do it and we'll pay with ARPA money, we can't do that, we just can't do that at the meeting.
But you can.
We don't have a, we don't have a ARPA checkbook.
Yes, we do.
But you can, you can, you can.
As long as the select board votes that it's an appropriate expenditure, we have the money already, it's just like when we had the CARES funds. As long as it was an approved expenditure.
I'm curious, so, but when, when does this ARPA money expire?
Twenty twenty-four.
And can you tell me about how much we have in there?
Two seventy-five, no?
Yes, I'm two seventy-six.
And twenty twenty-four to obligation, but until twenty twenty-six to expend.
Twenty twenty-six to expend?
Yeah.
We should move on the money, we should get it on.
Well, my point being, you know, like I said in my proposed webpage, the app, we would solicit or invite proposals for the use of the funds. And then we would review them on a rolling basis, cause I've talked to people about it and they say, well, is it gonna be gone in a couple of months or in a year? And I said, you know, there's no guarantees about anything, whenever the select board decides to spend it, they spend it. And, uh, but if we set it on a rolling basis, people understand what that means. And we could also track anytime we do spend it, so that way people are aware of how much has been spent and how much is left.
Great idea.
So, and so, um, a paper that sounds really terrific, um, I think in practice it might be a little bit of a, of a chore, but I guess, I guess we'll see. Because obviously, you know, when you mentioned paying, there's money for, everybody believes that what they're doing deserves to be paid for. And everybody is very committed to their particular group or, or committee. So I think it's gonna be, there certainly will be a lot of, a lot of passion, um, and, uh, and there'll be a lot of, um. Well, there'll be a lot of, a lot of, be a lot of passion about, about spending those monies for those, for those individuals. So, um, if this is something that, um, and you think you'd wanna try, um, you know, we're certainly not gonna send it anyway.
Thank you.
Yes, me.
I, I just think you have to be a little bit careful about, uh, you know, you got, we got a big inheritance here. It's a big inheritance. And we shouldn't be spending it on groceries, cause we can afford our groceries, sort of, as long as we don't get steaks and anything else. But we should spend it on important things and, and, and you have to be careful about that, because it's so easy to say, oh, well, we just got a little bit here, a little bit there. And then not have this good, beautiful inheritance to spend on something important. That's, that's all, I just, I just worry about, you know, there was talk about a couple of other line items to put into the community, uh, community center lighting. That should be, that should come out of our budget, that's just stated budget stuff. But, you know, it, it should be something that's worthwhile.
Right, but it, the philosophy is, uh, so is it, do we, um, are there small amounts for, for lots of different individuals or groups? Or is it a few big amounts for, for things that will, that will, you know, that will have a tendency to benefit the entire community?
Things that we might not buy, things that we might not do. That here we have this, this amount of money and we could spend, you know, something to do good. And we might not wanna spend, you know, fifty, a hundred thousand dollars on, on some item, because that's a big chunk of money to put, put into the budget. So here we have, we can do this good thing. And it's just, it's just a matter of being careful about what you're, what you're choosing.
Can we, can we put a leadership training in there? That's probably not.
Well, are, is there any, uh, what do they call it, opposition to creating this webpage?
Not for me.
I, I'm, 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 I'm not opposed to it, I'm, I'm, I'm not enthusiastic, um, only because I think you could be way meaty even in. In individual requests, however, I, I will, I will certainly not stand in the way of it, since you're gonna be the one who's gonna be going through. All the documents, you're also going to, you know, again, when you talk, Mickey's, Mickey's analogy, his analogy is spot on about the inheritance, you know. Someone from the family is not gonna be happy.
Oh, yeah, that's a.
So that's the, that's the other thing for the board to consider. So there's, you know, some people, uh, you know, we gave too much to, to, uh, to my sister, but you didn't get enough, I, why, why did I not get as much as my sister did? And in a small.
Especially if you get some proposal in them, right?
So in a small, in a small town, um, there's, uh, that's gonna, you know, I, I think that you wanna be concerned that you don't want to turn it into a, a lot of squabbling as well. Uh, if you, again, if you think, if you think about it in the terms of, of inheritance. However, uh, again, I, I'm not gonna, I'm certainly not gonna spin right if you'd like to do it, and, and, go ahead.
Is that your motion?
Yeah, motion to create this webpage for ARPA funds.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
I, I don't know. But, uh, we're.
I'd also like to point out that the proposed people have to give a written proposal for what they're gonna spend the money, or they have to come before the select board to make the presentation. Make sure that's in the.
Sure, okay.
Please.
Yeah, I like, it's good to have people here, cause then we can, they can ask questions and we can ask questions and.
Right.
All on the same page.
I think it's a very good addition. They're gonna have to come here and leave their things.
And we can work with them too, like, maybe they have, hey, you think we can do this with the funds and we can work with them, uh, to come to an agreement. And if, if that's necessary.
Okay. Okay, discussion of bylaw review committee revision to be placed on a warrant.
Yeah, but the bylaw was approved by the attorney general's office. However, the last, the bylaw committee cannot add anything to the warrant. And the bylaw says, any recommendations or revisions to the bylaw shall be placed on a warrant. And the AG's office pursuant to their letter said that can't be done, only the select board can add items to the warrant. So I wanna put this on the, uh, warrant so that it can be corrected at the annual town meeting and strike the last sentence of the, uh, bylaw review committee.
Okay. You want to, wait, so the bylaw itself, right now, says what?
You just said it. So is that any?
Should I raise the AG's response? I have it right, pulled it right up.
Yeah, sure.
Dear Ms. Walker, this is dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-one, regarding the Monterey Annual Town Meeting of May one, twenty twenty-one. Case number one zero two five zero, warrant article number ten. Article ten, we approve article ten from the May first, twenty twenty-one Monterey Annual Town Meeting. Our comments regarding article ten are provided below. Under article ten, the town amended its general bylaws to add a new unnumbered bylaw, Residence Bylaw Review Committee, that provides as follows. The voters of Monterey hereby desire the formation of a bylaw review committee consisting of five members. Members would be initially appointed by the Board of Selectmen for a one-year term. At the end of that year, the positions would be elected, positions with staggered terms of three years. The bylaw review committee shall be tasked with reviewing the town's bylaws, proposing revisions and additions thereto. Which revisions and additions shall be included on all warrants to be voted on at yearly annual town meetings. Back to the AG's response. The new bylaw review committee bylaw requires the committee to review the town's bylaws and propose revisions and additions to them. The proposed revisions and additions shall be included on all warrants to be voted on at yearly annual town meetings. The town must apply the requirement that the proposed revisions and additions be included on a town meeting warrant consistent with General Law Chapter thirty-nine, Section ten. That requires town meetings to be called in pursuance of a warrant under the hands of the selectmen. Pursuant to Section ten, the Board of Selectmen determines what articles are included on a town meeting warrant, subject only to the citizen's petitions process in Section ten. For this reason, the bylaw cannot be applied in a manner that requires the Board of Selectmen to include the revisions and additions proposed by the bylaw review committee on a town meeting warrant. The town should we consult with town council with any questions on this issue? So it sounds to me like what they're looking for is it to say that the revisions and additions are proposed to the select board or who can include them on all warrants, yeah.
And that's what I wanna change, just like out that last paragraph, shall be placed on the warrant with recommendation revisions given to the select board.
Would it be prudent to just have Attorney Riley draft?
I reached out to me in the.
Yes, so.
But they approved it.
So I would, um, okay.
You don't have to, you don't have to do anything, the attorney general approved it, just brought to your attention that before somebody gets on the warrant, you have to be on it. You don't need to do anything to change it.
So when the bylaw review committee next year comes with their proposals, the select board should point this out and say, well, we'll take all their proposals anyway, that, cause they're a good group of people, but.
Why not put it on the warrant? The only people that can change the bylaw are the voters, what's the problem? I don't understand the problem.
I don't have a problem, other than that, we don't have the wording for the actual warrant.
So, so here's the thing, so we need, we need to have counsel to, to come up with the appropriate wording, or, or at least approve a, a modification of that warrant. Okay, cause I, yes, I agree, I agree, that, that, that is not written correctly, and should, they should make, they should make proposal to the select board and the select board should vote, should vote it on it before it gets on the warrant. So I agree also, so, um, um, so. Who's, who's doing that, he, he's on with town council?
I'll contact them a little bit.
Sorry, contact them, have that thing again, have them, have them draw up the idea and we'll, we'll, we'll read it and vote.
With the general idea being, instead of it going directly on the warrant list.
Right, because, because they are, cause they are, um.
Advising.
They're advising, just like, like our working group has a, they advise the select board, we should, they should do this, and we go on, yes or no. Um, uh, so I think that was, yeah, it was. Okay.
Well, second part of my motion about this bylaw is that the website has it listed as bylaw, committee's bylaw. I think it should be what's listed in the bylaws, citizen review.
Resident bylaw.
Resident review, they should change it on the, on the website. Is that okay with everybody? Do I need to make a motion to do that?
No, that works for me.
So, that you want it to be called the Resident Bylaw Review Committee?
I want it to be called what's in the bylaw.
Can you just be specific, John, so that I can do exactly what it is you want?
So it says, quote, uh, residence, with an apostrophe at the end, bylaw review committee.
Right.
That's a crazy name.
Bylaw.
Because is it, is it, anyway, I like it, it's, it's an expert opinion.
Where, where are you, Justin, on the bylaw review committee page?
No, uh, on the town meeting minutes.
Oh, well, that's the town clerk. Town clerk.
No, I'm not on anything, what I'm on is the letter from the attorney general's office.
No, what do you want changed on the website, is what I'm asking, what page on the website needs to be?
The bylaws, the bylaws at the bottom of the bylaws and it just says, uh, it says bylaw committee bylaw. And it should be what Justin just quoted.
Is, wait, when we voted this file of this committee in, we called it the Resident Bylaw Review Committee?
Yes. That's what the AG's office says it's called.
I don't care what the AG says. If we voted, if we voted in a town meeting, whatever we voted in a town meeting is what the name of it is.
Correct.
If, if, but if, if they, if they respond and they use the incorrect words, doesn't, doesn't mean anything.
So the, the thing actually says, the voters of Monterey hereby desire the formation of a bylaw review committee.
Bylaw review committee, that's, that's the end of it, bylaw review committee.
So I will add the word review, cause that is missing, but it doesn't say, it doesn't say residents.
So it's not resident bylaw review committee, they, the AG just added that word, but the AG wasn't at the town meeting, so. It was called the bylaw review committee. That's what I have as a monogram on my, uh. Shirt. Okay, so are we all, are we all, can we continue?
So we're gonna seek advice from council on how to word that.
On how to word that, but I, it sounds like we're all in a gru, in, in agreement.
On the substance.
On the substance, correct?
I'm gonna table my number twelve. Number thirteen, I'd like for the select board to send a letter to the investigators. I think we should receive all copies of all correspondence to the investigators during the investigation and private citizens.
Okay.
I think it's important for the select board to know who was contacting the investigators and for what purposes.
So, as.
And that's my motion.
Okay, so as you are aware, uh, per town council, any, uh, any discussions, any documents that have to do with the investigation must be sequestered while the investigation is open. The investigation is currently open. Therefore.
Investigation is closed.
No, the investigation is not closed. The investigation remains open. Uh, and that is, that is per town council.
Well, so maybe between officials and the people investigated, but private citizens contacting the investigators outside the scope of the investigation is definitely pertinent.
Okay, so.
So.
Uh, documents, documents and discussions about, about investigation remain sequestered while investigation is up, per town council. If you wanna reach out to town council and see if you can change the law, feel free to do that. However, we specifically wish the town council to ask them that question, and that includes public records requests and.
Who reached out?
Everything else. The board selectmen, uh, gave me approval to reach out to town council for that very thing, he was one of the ones that you were not at. But I'm sure there's, I'm sure it exists on YouTube.
You're okay with that?
What, sorry?
Alright.
I missed, I missed.
I missed all. It's not important, he's gonna say the same thing three times in different ways.
Yeah, I think it's important for us to see which town citizen contacted the investigations. It was the select board's investigation, it wasn't anybody else's investigation to influence. Those documents are pertinent to the investigation results, I think. So why don't we get a copy of them?
I'm wrong, you're not actually asking the same question in a different way, you're asking the same question again and again. Any, any documents?
I can't get the documents from the.
Any discovery documents?
From the investigators, cause I'm one.
Probably no one.
This is, this is still an open investigation. It's still an open investigation.
The investigation is closed, we have to report on the investigation.
No, the investigation is not closed, per town council.
I don't believe your interpretation was.
It was writ.
They sent it to me in a letter.
Yeah.
Yes. So. Anyway, it, it is, Justin?
You're confusing our documents with private citizens' documents, had, yes, you were.
Actually, town council sent this to all three of us. It was, it was part of the discussion of the, of the, the privacy during the investigation, during the continuing investigation. So if you look at your email.
So I think one, one thing is that to the extent that we discuss documents that aren't public, they become public. So I would refrain from discussing documents that aren't public.
Alright, so I'm, I'm gonna refrain from, from any of this discussion whatsoever.
You're serious?
What's that?
You're serious on that, Tom?
It's my understanding that if we discuss documents that aren't public in an open session, will become public. Attorney Riley has said that.
How have emails sent by private?
Oh, no, that, those aren't private, but also I don't know if Attorney Green has the time of data and will do that. I mean, did you ask her?
She will respond to one, one board member, it needs a vote from the, from the majority of the select board to get the documents from her. She won't respond to one Select Board member. It needs a vote from the, from the majority of the Select Board to get the documents from her.
I don't know if she'll respond.
Okay, so let's, let's move on. A review mail and correspondence to be sent, retirement notifications from Beth and Dave Gilmore attached. I have, I have in my hand two letters dated March sixteenth, twenty twenty two. Dear town of Monterey, as of April thirteenth, twenty twenty two, I will, I will be officially retiring from my position as the Attendant at the Monterey Transportation sincerely. And once, I will leave, and once, Beth. I would like to say publicly that one of the best things this town ever did was hire Beth and Dave and they're truly going to be missed.
What day are they meeting?
Uh, April thirteenth. Twenty twenty two.
That's a Wednesday, right?
Yes.
I second that. Thank you for saying that. They, they, they have been great.
We got lucky. We got really lucky. And also Ben, but he didn't, he, he just couldn't make it. He just couldn't. But Ben, Dave and Beth, like a super squad.
And it had one, one added benefit. Dave and Beth got married. And we had a reason to have a big party here in town, so more powerful. And then Ben would have been a third leg, so he didn't want that.
Okay, um, so, uh, I miss questions from the public.
I have a question or a comment. It was suggested that with regard to the complaints that the investigator reviewed against the selectmen, that the selectmen were entitled to a executive session of, rather than public. And I just want to remind the selectmen that the employee manual clearly expressly states that you are not covered by the employee manual. So I think that the portions of the report that relate to you are public records, are kept on record now. And that in the interests of transparency, you should make them available to the public and publish them on our home page immediately.
I got no problem with that. So, um, as, okay, so the board did receive a, an email from town council with general guidance on how to handle the report. We asked town council for guidance on how to handle the report and we're going to, we're following their guidelines. And so I don't profess to be an attorney, so I, uh, so I'm going to follow their guidelines, their guidelines right now, and we're following their guidelines.
Is that in the memo? Memorandum?
Read, read your email. You sent it to all three of us. You sent it to all three. We read the email first.
Was it entitled memorandum? Is that the one you're talking about?
I don't know what was entitled. It might have been entitled, you know, happy spring. I'm not really sure.
I'm not familiar with the laws on that enough to know, but I, I don't have anything about me that, you know, I have any interest in keeping private.
Well, my question to you, what was it titled? What did, I'm over here. I'm not over there. I'm over here. I'm asking you a question. The reason I asked you the question about the memorandum, how does Don Colburn know that there was a memorandum sent to the Select Board?
He was talking about it.
No, he said it before the meeting in the Google group. How did he know a memorandum was sent to the Select Board?
I don't think I've seen that.
I don't know. I think, I think he thinks that, that somehow there's a, there's, there's a secret, there's a secret back channel, Don, that you're getting copies of.
I haven't seen any memorandum.
Some of saying.
My comment is based on what the attorney said at the, at the meeting, which the attorney said at the meeting could be repeated by anybody who was at the meeting.
Okay. Okay, just. Because.
Just a comment.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so, um, so that's basically it. Um, the, um, last item to discuss entering the executive session for the purpose of approving executive session minutes of ten, four, twenty one, three, twenty three, twenty two, twelve P M and three, twenty three, twenty two.
I'll second the motion to go into executive session and we will not re-enter.
We will not re-enter into, into an open meeting. So therefore a roll call, it's, um, please make a guess.
Justin, make a guess.
No, I want to go down.
Okay, so we're going to, like, twenty two seconds. For your participation. I will be recording something else.
We can shift.
Yep.
Steve.
Steve Paul, Steve.
Say what?